Huh? Okay, I call our meeting to order at six o'clock for our January 21st School Board meeting. And would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Madam President. To start us off in our January regular meeting, first item is the MESD Board of Education Reorganization: Election of Officers. Just want to read this for the public and for the board. "For the purpose of organization of the board, the board shall at its first regular meeting in January elect from its membership the President, Vice President, and Secretary." And so, Madam President, this is from Board Policy. Every year annually, in the first regular meeting, there is a discussion of reorganization of the school board and election of officers. So, Madam President, we will start with the President's seat.
At this time, at this time, the floor is open for nomination for the Board of Physician of President.
Now, President, I'd like to make the motion to go ahead and elect you back to that seat. If the board...
Is there a second to the nomination?
I'll second.
Any discussion? I need a roll call vote.
Jeff Lawson, aye.
Lindsey Donner, aye.
Albert Chavez, aye.
Denny Young, aye.
Lynda Hudson, aye.
I have been honored to serve you this year, and I will look forward to continuing.
All right, Madam President, for the seat of Vice President for the MESD School Board.
At this time, the floor is open for the nomination for the Board of Vice President. We have a nom- do we have a nomination for...
To go forward?
I'll nominate Denny to continue as Vice President.
And I second.
Okay.
And we have any discussion?
No.
Okay. Then we'll need a roll call vote.
Jeff Lawson, aye.
Lindsey Donner, aye.
Albert Chavez, aye.
Denny Young, aye.
Lynda Hudson, aye.
Okay. Thank you, Denny.
And Madam President, then for the election of Officer for Secretary.
Okay. At this time, we need a nomination for our Board Secretary. And I would nominate Albert Chavez.
I second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, we need a roll call vote.
Jeff Lawson, aye.
Lindsey Donner, aye.
Albert Chavez, aye.
Denny Young, aye.
Lynda Hudson, aye.
Thank you.
Board members, thank you very much. And thank you, Board members, for those of you that are in the positions, and look forward to continuing our work with all the Board members and the elected officers into the remainder of the school year. All right.
Thank you.
Madam President, moving on to Item D: Adoption of the Agenda. Looking over the agenda, I recommend approval of tonight's agenda for our regular meeting of January 21st, 2025.
Superintendent Viviano has recommended that we approve our agenda for January 21st, 2025. Do we have a motion? I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passed.
All right. Madam President, welcome of guests. Yeah, still getting used to it.
I'm still getting used to it, half the time. Welcome, all of you. Happy New Year to you. We're so excited to have our guitar group here with us tonight, and I'm sure we'll all be blessed by what they are going to perform for us tonight. And thank you for all your parents coming and being a part of it. We always enjoy when we have family and students here from the district to be a part of our meeting. So, we look forward to what we have in store.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to Item Number F: Approval of Minutes. Madam President, I recommend approval of the draft of the minutes from our regular meeting on December 17th, 2024.
Superintendent Viviano has recommended that we approve the minutes from our- the draft from our regular meeting on December 17th, 2024. I will make a motion that we accept these minutes. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Right, moving on to Superintendent's Board: Comments and Commodations. Madam President, as you mentioned, we do have with us, and we're honored to have the MESD guitar students, Moriarty High School Guitar Teacher Justin McMurdo, as well as our middle school guitar teacher, Mr. Donovan Preia. Spoke with the two teachers and the students earlier before our meeting, and they will come out and talk to the board and the public about the accomplishments that have been happening, especially with Allstate. And they are prepared to play a little bit for us. So, if they can come on in, come on in, all right. Welcome, welcome, welcome. All right. So, we will start with Mr. Preia and guitar students from the middle school. Absolutely. You get the microphone.
Oh, my gosh, okay. Do I hold it? Okay. So, first of all, I'd like to say, one of the many things about guitar is not only the instrument itself, but also the people that I get to surround myself with every day. As a result of being a guitarist for the past three years, I've met a lot of amazing people, like Eva and Piper and Alexi and Penny. I've been playing with all of them for a really long time now, and it's safe to say that I really am so grateful to play along. Such amazing ladies as a result of my teenage years and going through middle school as a young girl. It's amazing to say that I've been a part of this program for so long, and that it's a really great step towards the future and how our next generation of guitarists are going to look up to this and this amazing opportunity that we thank you all for giving us.
All right, thank you, Mr. Preia, thank you. Wonderful job.
Thank you.
Madam President, members of the board, members of the audience, up next will be Mr. Justin McMurdo. I will let him tell you how long he's been Moriarty High School's guitar teacher. But his program has thrived, produced not only great musicians, but wonderful students. And it kind of piggybacks on what was just said. They learn to collaborate in- as a group in different ways than sometimes we might think about if it's a English or math. And music just can inspire students, inspire the staff. They do a wonderful job. So, Mr. McMurdo, thank you for everything that you do and you have done for all of our students, and it's your show right now.
All right. I have never had the microphone before, this is fun. So, these guys coming out right now are all Allstate guitarists. And I'll tell you a little bit about Allstate and kind of that whole thing. We start preparing for Allstate auditions around March and April, and work for months and months through the summer. The audition isn't until the following October. The entire state will send their best of the best to go and audition. In the guitar section, I know 17 schools had students make it in. They select 72 total. And we had about 10 students just from Moriarty High School make it. So, Moriarty High School represented about 15% of the entire Allstate guitar ensemble. Yeah. They're all amazing students, they represented us with pride, do a great job. It's really re- I'll let some of them talk to you about it, too. One thing I'll say, we have some students here who made it into Allstate as sophomores, which is really unusual. Typically, only the seniors who've done it the longest are at that level. But we have some younger students who made it through into Allstate, who are actually students of Mr. Preia. And so, it's really awesome to have that bringing into my program. And they do amazing stuff. And why don't you tell them a little bit about it, Christopher, your experience with the guitar program and with Allstate?
Going on to- or I'm in my sophomore year currently. I've been with the Moriarty Edgewood School District Guitar Program for going on three years now. It's been a phenomenal experience. I started in eighth grade with Mr. Preia. It was where I found my passion for guitar. It allowed me to branch out and really explore what guitar was about. Going on into high school, I was honored to have the opportunity to audition for Allstate guitar. We prepared for quite a few months. It was quite a lot of fun going into Allstate. The rehearsals were like eight hours long. It was rewarding. It was definitely an experience that shapes who I am now, looking back on it. It was tons of fun, and it was one of the best learning experiences I have ever had as a person. And I want to thank Mr. Preia for getting me into guitar. I want to thank Mr. McMurdo for giving me an opportunity or opportunities to explore and become a better guitarist. And I would like- I would like to thank the administration for making it a possibility.
Anybody else have anything else to add? I think that's pretty well said there. Can I pass this microphone off now? Here we go, thank you, Chris.
We're gonna play a festive piece for you guys. It's called "Six Bells" by Moody Worf. I think you'll really like it, it's a cool piece.
Thank you for coming.
I'm glad to be always. You're always welcome.
Well done, thank you very much. Madam President, members of the board, any other comments before we move on? Mr. Adams, anything about the guitar program? Yeah, yeah.
I think it's an excellent program, and I was so delighted to see that we had something like this when I first came on the board, because I did not know it. And it's been a wonderful experience to hear them play. And best wishes in the rest of their year.
Yep. And parents, thank you for the support. Thank you for bringing them out tonight, those of you that drove them here and hauling the guitar, or I'm not sure who hauled guitars around, or if they were here. But thank you very much. You're more than welcome to stay, or you can head on out with your students. But again, you're invited to stay for the rest of the board meeting, and thank you very much. And well done. And we look forward to more great things. And we need to look into how we can get that national recognition going on, right? Something like that, most definitely. These kids, these kids and their teachers and the parents deserve that, yeah, most definitely. We'll give them some time, thank you. Madam President, if it's okay, I think we'll just leave all these chairs out, right? Yeah, yeah, all right.
We'll make everybody sit up here.
I'm on the hot seat.
All right. Wow, that was good.
Awesome.
That was good, needed that. Madam President, members of the board, we will now move on to Item B under number two, Section Number Two: Principles and Athletic Directors Board Reports. Madam President, John Anaya is not with us tonight. There is a district game that was scheduled for tonight, and he's there. But if there's any questions for him, I can definitely get those to him and get an answer to you. But any questions for principals or athletic- well, or for Mr. Anaya?
Go ahead. You have some. I know, but you want to- go ahead. I'll let you go first.
First, a couple of things, Miss Loose, Mrs. Loose. A lot less referrals means a lot more kids in class. I mean, obviously, it's growing from where it was, what, three years ago to today? It's awesome. Leslie, math 27% in eighth grade? I don't- I mean, that's pretty good.
It's gotta be the end of the year.
It's gotta be the end of the year, okay. Okay, well, I mean...
We're gonna, we're gonna, yeah.
Well, any- anything in the positive direction is still positive, so... But that means we got opportunities to improve on some of the other stuff, right? That's okay. Other than that, thank you guys for the work you do. And I did, you know, I do actually look at a little bit of this stuff, and I see the report Natalie sends out, and it seems like we're headed in the right direction, and we're getting growth at every grade level. And it took about a year to figure out what the heck I was looking at, but I do appreciate what you guys do, and thank you.
Yes. On the back of that, yes, congratulations. It's nice to see numbers going up in the improvement area. And I'm so excited that the Blue Collar Tour is coming back again tomorrow. That's just awesome that they have found a home here. How many schools are you inviting this year, or have you invited? That's, that's awesome, yeah. Very good. And enrollment has gone up again, too? Yes, and it's- it'll be, after seeing your- in your individual reports, it'll be good to get your review next month on all these test data. So, we're looking to look forward to that. And for Mr. Anaya, the wrestling students, for such a young group, that is an accolade that they've... And for Mr. Anaya, the wrestling students for such a young group, that is an accolade that they've got first and seconds in their competitions. That's awesome. And that they have two or three people that have already signed early for athletic programs to go to college next year. So congratulations on all those wonderful things. And thank you, teachers and principals, for all that you do and all you're doing this year to get our kids doing better. We appreciate you.
All right. Any other members of the board?
Exactly, they did a good job.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chavis, Mr. Young and President Hudson. I think President Hudson mentioned that in our monthly report out next month, we will have a report out for our middle of the year testing data. You have some of it snippets through the principals' reports as well as Mrs. Romero's report. But we will be reporting out to the board once again in a little more in-depth of the middle of the year data, growth that we've seen and other places that we're still trying to focus on to, to, to get our student achievement, our assessment data where we want it to be. But very proud of the work that everyone is, is putting in to, to, to see the growth. And then a review of the upcoming 90-day plans that will be put together for, for the spring semester from, from each of the school, each of our campuses. So thank you. Thank you, everyone. Madam President, moving on to Board President and Board of Education, comments or accommodations? If there's anything else or anything the board would like to speak on?
I always jump the gun early. I'm sorry. Is anybody else have something they wanna share or add?
No, all right. Then we will move on to superintendent's report. Madam President, members of the board, members of the audience. This month, since I just mentioned that in February, we'll have more information on student outcomes reported down with our data. We, we're gonna report out on our MESD Emergency Response Team. The, I think they're trying to pull it up now. Thank you, ladies. So our focus area number, there should be six there, right? It's not just blank, but number six is safety and security. The goal for the Moriarty Edgewood School District in the approved strategic plan was that MESD will create a safe, supported and trusting learning environment for students, staff and community by implementing safety and security protocols in all buildings with 100% compliance. Every day we work on that and we work consistently to be sure that it's a safe learning environment, a secure learning environment and support students. We reported out earlier this year in the progress that we made and thank you to the board for approving our agreement with the Edgewood, Town of Edgewood and the Edgewood Police Department to have our SRO on the west side of the district. And she's done a great job working with the students, building relationships. And so we'll keep moving forward with those, with those. Officer Harris with the Moriarty Edgewood Police Department continues to work with the Moriarty Schools and really be a strong presence. You know, with one SRO and kind of three schools, their schedule is, you know, it's pinball, but they're doing, they're doing a wonderful job. Tonight, I would ask if Mr. Adams would, would come up to the front and we'd like to talk to you about the action step about our District Emergency Response Team. So the strategy that be, to be implemented is that the District ERT would meet with local law enforcement and first responders as well as school staff in implementing and creating a safe and secure environment. Those would be quarterly meetings. Tonight, we want to just highlight for you and the board, the evaluation and planning of reunification. Starting up once again, some training with tabletop exercises with our principals and we discussed moving them into buildings. And then I'll talk a little bit more about staff training, the New Mexico Safe Schools Summit that's coming up. So, Mr. Adams, if you don't mind, first bullet there, reunification.
Okay, Madam President, members of the board. So we've been talking a long time, Mr. Bibiano and I, even back when we were both part of the ERT, about every training we go to, they, they, they talk about reunification of your school being the most difficult part of an emergency response. And that is in a, in a serious event, the big reunifications, in a serious event, how do you reunify all the students with their parents in an orderly fashion? Making sure you're getting them to the right people as well as all of the other, maybe mental health that you're dealing with, whatever the emergency is, whatever the community response is to the event, whatever's causing the displacement of kids or the reunification process. And for an example, we've, we've been to several trainings over the years, but when the shooting happened in, at Aztec High School, I think that was probably eight years ago now or something like that, and, and a student was killed at Aztec High School. Their reunification site was the racetrack between Farmington and Bloomfield or right there out of Farmington. And they told me about 10,000 people showed up to that reunification site. So that's how massive a reunification is. When the whole community finds out something's happened to their kids, they all wanna respond and they all wanna be part of the process to help. So what we've talked about and all the principals worked really hard at developing their state safety plans the first semester is what does reunification site look like at every school? And everybody developed their own reunification place and we're gonna go from this school to this school or we're gonna go from the high school to the civic center, whatever that might look like. And after conversations, we decided to develop a reunification site that all the schools could go to, which would be this complex. And we can already have all of the pieces in place, all the responsibilities of the, the personnel right here at Central Office as well as assistance from all the schools that can come and assist. Because, just because you have a plan at your school, something traumatic happens at that school, you don't know that the people at your school are gonna be able to perform their duties depending on what, what the event is. So we're in the early stages of looking at this complex as a reunification site for all of our schools. And we're, we're hoping we develop something we never have to use, but if we do have to use it, we wanna be well-prepared. Anything else on that?
So to add a little bit again, this process of evaluation of what we have in place and, and planning for the district offices really came about last month, sitting in the training. And Mr. Adams and Principal Guest and BD were with me and they pitched the idea. And we started really having a serious conversation about that. The principals this morning were briefly given, you know, the idea and we asked them to kind of poke holes, you know? But this is a big process. This is, this is, this is, I appreciate Mr. Adams saying this is, we definitely have to get this solid with the hopes of never having to use our reunification plan. Also knowing that not every time there's an emergency in a school, would this building have to be the reunification center? There are, there are, there are times where reunification happens in a school, at the school because of, of an incident that doesn't require transporting students. But this does take a large effort through transportation, through maintenance and, and operations, through our mental health teams, our, our staff here. And so we wanted just to present to the board that, you know, we're really looking into this as, as, as a serious option for reunification, law enforcement, first responders. And so this is going to take us months to, to get together and, and several meetings. And our goal is to have this up and running and, and ready for, for the next school year as, as, as needed. And then we will re, resubmit our, our safety plans to the state and, and move from there. During that process, the board will be updated. The board members will be asked to participate on, on different meetings if, if available and committees. But this is, this is a, like Mr. Adams said, a piece that many school districts, we, 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 putting myself with school districts across the, the United States. You put it on paper, you think about it, there may, you know, you practice it, but it isn't as detailed as it needs to be. And we've been told that by several agencies. We've, we've worked with the Department of Homeland, we've worked with local emergency response management teams from Torrance County, Santa Fe County, and they'll continue to work with us on this. So Madam President, members of the board, any questions on reunification?
I just have, have one. Heaven forbid that we would have anything as, as large as Aztec, but being in a rural community, we don't have any large, large space that allows a lot of cars to come in and out to group, to group and whatnot. So are we looking at having to expand land-wise to accommodate people coming in to get their kids?
I don't, I don't think that we'd be looking at expanding. I think that the whole process is more of planning. So the, the different agencies from Edgewood and Moriarty, and we had these conversations during that day, me and Mr. Bibiano. What would it look like if students were being transported to this building where their roads might be shut off? I mean, there might be a, a process for parents to get to here instead of the whole community, but that's why we need their help. They would be the ones controlling traffic flow and where people could and couldn't park. And we like this facility because of the fence and you can control a little bit of who can come in and out of the property and still, and, and still keep kids safe instead of it just being chaotic. But I don't think it would be adding anything. I would, I would think it would be planning for what we have and then dealing with what we have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
I do like the idea. I just don't understand why it's taken so long. Do we still have the timeframe of what we had for these on the strategic plan, like our times? The guidelines of times that we were looking at? Cause you just said next year.
Madam President, Mr. Lawson, this, this is, it came out of an ERT meeting. So on the strategic plan, it's, it's a quarterly meeting. There are conversations in between on a regular basis. We don't have reunification as an action step alone. The action steps were to work on getting school resource officers in, on, on each side to make sure that our, our plans, this school safety plans were submitted in December on time so that, that, and then ongoing conversations through the ERT of evaluating and reevaluating and creating new systems. Like I mentioned, in, for years, a few years, that Mr. Adams and I have worked on the ERT in different capacities as principals or in district administration, really thinking about this building as a standalone the past couple of years, had not come into conversation that I know of. And so we thought it'd be a good idea. It, it is, it is a building that can, that can hold entire schools if we needed to. Just by, on that day that we started the conversation, we were walking, pacing out rooms and, and already looking at the, at the maps of where we could have. You know, with reunification, it's not just to house the kids, but it's where do parents come in and out? Where we may need a station for, like Mr. Adams talked about, a mental health room, right? Social work, medical assistance and, and, and an incident command center, just to name a couple of places that we would have to lay out. In terms of timeline, again, the timeline was to SRO, district plans and the ERT meeting as well as checking schools on a regular basis for vulnerability. Those were the strategies, but based on the, on those four strategies or those action steps, excuse me, this conversation started.
And to be clear, every school's always had a reunification site. They call it a secondary site, but South Mountain was, had there separate from, we didn't have a unified one. And the idea came up, it would be a lot easier to plan for everything if everybody knew where you were going and we already had staffing in place. So that's where the conversation, so we've always had the reunification sites. It's just, I didn't know what it looked like at a facility that I'm not familiar with.
I like the idea as well, and I think you answered my question. I was just wanting to make sure that the reunification plans that are currently in place are sufficient.
Yes, I believe that the, the ones we submitted are a plan, but again, they're not as organized as we wanna make this one.
And Madam President and Member Donner, they, the plans have been submitted, the safety plans, the entire safety plans, which are a few hundred pages or maybe almost to 200 pages, which, you know, we, we list out our systems for all different types of situations. They're being evaluated by the state still. The state will give us a rubric of what they believe is solid, what they believe is, is not gonna pass and to redo it. And, and so we'll, we, we have yet to hear back the, the feedback from them, but we don't have to wait for them, right? Cause we have already something in place to move on if we need to. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
So the other piece of ERT that we've done in the past and we haven't done as much of it recently is having tabletop exercises at our admin council meetings. So today, actually, we brought that back and what we do is we show a scenario and all the principals think through it. And there's not a, there's not a right or wrong answer because you're making decisions on the fly. But it, it just brings up conversations about what would you do? Did you think of this? Would you have evacuated? How do you communicate with Central Office? How do you communicate with your community? How many times do you do that? And just start some conversations. So we went through that this morning and, and it, it just makes us all think a little bit more as we go through it and ask questions or come up with ideas. Should do one of those at a work session.
Are you involving the SROs or the school safety officers and things like that to help with that tabletop or?
They, they weren't involved in our, our admin council tabletop, but they, they are involved. I think Mr. Bibiano is getting, we're, we're trying to bring them in more with, with the school and, and the planning and the, the procedures in the school. And I think that's what the staff training piece is.
Today's tabletop was a car on fire in the parking lot, Mr. Adams, right? Yeah, yeah, and. Yeah, so it's, it's. I, I think I'm safe to say a lot of the situations or, or exercises we've gone through in the past could be, you know, kind of what just rises to the top that people think about might happen at a school away from an unfortunate huge event. We wanna run tabletop exercises that some things we've maybe have never seen before. There may be a, a tabletop exercise where there is a airplane wreck that happens in the area on either side of the schools, right? Or either, either side of the district. We have the airport that fly, and planes fly over Moriarty Elementary, the high school and, and same in Edgewood with, with something going on. We've done tabletop exercises in the past where we've had to think about and talk about a chemical spill on I-40 and Route 66 is right there. And so we start talking about it, like Mr. Adams said, it's not just the communication, what do we do with students and staff? It's, do we know how to shut down the HVAC? Do we know how to, you know, you know, make sure that our utilities and everything are fine? And so these exercises, just like many other organizations or, or, you know, public places and public entities that run through this. Again, it's, it's talking through it, thinking and walking away with, with maybe redoing some, some of our systems. redoing some some of our systems in-house as 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 a as a principal or as a district.
Who would be in charge? Would it be State Police, Gallow, City, you guys?
So that's that's always been so initially, Mr. Chavez, that's a good question. Who's in charge? If there's a if there's a big event, the principal is incident commander. All the principals, as part of their safety plans, had to go through Department of Homeland Safety Incident Command Training and and pass that and get certified. And then, based on the situation, then the superintendent or my designee may take over. As law enforcement or first responders come in, we will take we will take the lead of whomever. So if it's the town of Edgewood or the city of Moriarty Police Department, then we will take their directions on the incident command. As if we need emergency, the response teams from the management teams come in, they come in. But we've gone back and forth, and we've had we've had law enforcement and we've had several different agencies at a table talking about this. And, you know, there's a lot of times where they said the state police will take over on a big incident. But it there's a chain, you know, that works. It's the principal, then the superintendent, designee, or whatever administrators come on, or they work together and principal stays incident command. And my job would be to help out in a different capacity. But ultimately, if there's if there's a huge, unfortunately, a large event, then it's going to be up to the law enforcement officers and who takes control.
Media.
Mm hmm.
As part of the reunification plan, we'll we'll have a staging area at this facility.
Don't be afraid for everybody to be speaking out and everybody will know what's going on and maybe people people panic more and more.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. And and that's part of the safety plans as well that's submitted, like where the media staging area is, public information officer. I would run with that with the law enforcement or a designee if if something I wasn't available at that moment, but that would be laid out. Yes, sir.
You're busy with something else from Mr. Adams or somebody?
All right. Any other questions about either one, reunification or tabletop exercises? All right. Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Thank you.
And the last bullet. So part of part of the, again, this wasn't laid out as a strategy or an action step. However, these are opportunities that we have in the state of New Mexico. They are putting on their annual New Mexico Safe School Summit. And I bounced the ideas around and I talked to staff members and and President Hudson about sending our security aides, our SROs, to the New Mexico Safe School Summit. It is February 18th, 19th, and 20th. And it's ranges from the topics, from emergency response, they'll have reunification, they'll have tabletop, you know, exercises, to building relationships. These are all different topics. So I will, the agenda was solidified last week, and I will get it to each board member in in my update, just so you can see what kind of agendas. And I think it's good to send our security aides as well as our SROs and then come back. And then we can brief with our principals and and any other responders that we may need within the district. All right. You're welcome. So now we will move on to Learning Services, Director of Learning Services Board Report, Mrs. Romero.
Any questions for Mrs. Romero? Mrs. Romero, would you like to comment on your report?
Madam President, members of the board, just our enrollment numbers, you can see there, we are exactly the same as we were in December. There's some ins and outs at each school, but it comes out that we are exactly the same as we were at the December board meeting. So that's good news. And we will have verified 80-day numbers next month as we open 120-day reporting. The only other thing, you already touched on it, and we will go into more detail in February. But again, I just want to congratulate the principals and their staff and their students for the just tremendous work that they are doing. They are just very determined to progress, and they're doing great, great things throughout the district, grades preschool to 12th grade. But we're very excited about the growth we're seeing across the district. So congratulations.
Yes, it's good to see all your data there, and it's very encouraging. So thank you for all your hard work.
Absolutely. It's their work.
Yes.
Madam President, members of the board, with the speaking of of assessment data, Moriarty High School did their middle-of-the-year NWA testing last week. This week, they are finishing up with catching up with kids who may need may need to do makeup work and stuff. So again, we'll get into that data a little deeper when we when it's all said and done with the testing. And and I just wanted to, one one more point, under curriculum curriculum adoption, it is we are on cycle to adopt for science curriculum. And so there will be a preview on January 24th. That's this week. That's this week. Yep, with our secondary teachers. And then it'll we'll have a community family preview. That information went out. We'll get it out again on the 27th and 30th from three to five and five to seven in here in in the other room. We'll have all the curriculum that has been presented to us set up and with feedback available to give us from the community and parents and families and the teachers. Right. Thank you, Mrs. Romero. Appreciate it. Madam President, moving on to business, we have. Where am I? We have Consent Agenda Finance Items 1 through 3. So Madam President, I recommend adoption of Consent Agenda Finance Items 1 through 3.
So Viviano has asked for consent to go through Agenda Finance Items 1 through 3. Do we have a motion? I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, ma'am. Madam President, members of the board, Mrs. Young, any questions for Mrs. Young on Items B, C, D, or E?
I'd like to go back to the 67th and second 130.
Yes. December was a short month.
Yeah, December was a short month. Yeah, yeah. They will get longer, these reports. Mrs. Young, real quickly, Madam President, members of the board, we are still waiting to hear back from our auditors. The report's been through, it's been approved by the state. Okay, we're waiting on the, yeah.
Madam President, members of the board, the auditors have checked on our audit. It's still sitting on the first reviewer's desk for over a month. So they've asked that we reach out to the state auditor's office and see if we can't maybe get that nudged a little bit. So we don't know why. It's just kind of stuck there. That's what we're waiting for on that.
Maybe they're getting ready for the 60-day session and something was going on, right? Yeah, yeah. Okay. All right.
Hopefully next. Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
For all the work you do.
She's in, yeah, she takes care of us. Absolutely. Madam President, moving on to Personnel, Director of Personnel Board Report, Dr. Buckley, any questions for Dr. Buckley on his report? You good? All right.
I got a question.
Okay.
You don't know, right? I am. Thank you for asking. Yeah, I am. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez. Thank you for checking in on Dr. Buckley. Any other questions, comments? Dr. Buckley, good job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, under Personnel, Dr. Buckley has submitted two memos for leave without pay requests. They are listed as action items. I will read this for for the board. Leave for a serious health condition that allows for leave under FMLA must be granted if the employee is eligible for FMLA. If the employee was granted FMLA and exhausted the FMLA, then a leave without pay could be requested and approved by the superintendent if the leave period does not exceed exceed 12 weeks. If it does exceed 12 weeks, then the the leave without pay request may be approved by the governing board, the Board of Education. And we are in that situation with two employees. It's listed here on, we'll get back to the agenda. I have them separated. I don't have a one or a two. But we do have a an employee, a custodian, that is undergoing some treatment needed for a medical condition. This will be ongoing. And so what I am requesting is approval for leave without pay for this first district employee. They've they've submitted all the certifications. They qualified for FMLA. They've run out of it. But they're going to need ongoing treatment. And so, Madam President, under Personnel, B, number one, I recommend action for approval of leave without pay by the board for for this employee that will go until June 2025.
Mr. Viviano has asked for approval.
Thank you. Superintendent Viviano has asked for approval of leave without pay request for a custodian until June?
30th, 2020.
30 thirtieth of 2025. Can I have a motion? Do I have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Very similar. We have a second employee, a custodian, who is in a medical situation that has left them in a situation where they will be, they have exhausted their FMLA, and they will need continuous time off and have submitted all certifications by medical doctors and necessary information for the to to qualify under this policy. And so a second, under Personnel, Item B, number two, I recommend approval of leave without pay request for this employee until June 30th, 2025.
Again, Superintendent Viviano is asking for approval of leave without pay request for a second custodian until June 30th of 2025. Do we have a motion? Also move? Do we have a second? Any questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much. Again, with this situation, the employees will be provided this leave without pay, which means that a position will be held for them. We now have someone covering for them, and things are working for the schools. And if everything works out well for these employees, then we'll have look for and get them in a position back with the school district. All right. Moving on to Support Services, Special Projects and Other Items. Madam President, MHS Student Council Report. It was short, a short time since the last meeting. We had our meeting went to winter break just a couple of weeks. We also have a district, like I mentioned, district basketball game that a lot of the representatives for student council, they're either playing ball tonight or they're there cheering them on in that student section. And so we don't have any update, but we will have an update in February because we have some events coming up, Mr. Adams, at the high school.
Yeah.
Mm hmm.
Probably also you can get some information on how that went, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, spring break, there's graduation time going on.
All right. Thank you, sir. Moving on to Madam President, if I may, Transportation Coordinator's Board Report, Tech Coordinator's Board Report, Maintenance Coordinator's Board Report, or Food Services Coordinator's Board Report. Are there any questions or comments?
I just had a comment on the maintenance report. I wanted to say thank you to Mr. Ritchie for replacing the slide in Edgewood. And I was happy to see that about a dozen kids were able to use it right away. So that's exciting. So I just wanted to say thank you for that.
I agree. That was nice to see replaced.
Thank you, ma'am. I know we had talked about it. It's one of those things of is it under warranty? Is it not? Who's going to install it? Who doesn't? And we finally got that figured out. And it's the little curvy slide. Yeah, yeah, that they're able to use again there at the, yeah, definitely. Thank you, ma'am. Any questions, any for any of the other departments? Comments? No? All right. We will move on to Board Policy. Madam President, we don't have any board policies to review right now or to discuss. We'll move on to Citizens Comment. Ms. Jennifer, do we have any citizens comment? No? Okay. All right. Then we will move to Advanced Planning, Request for Discussion. Items to consider for the remainder of January and into February before our next board meeting. I did list out some of the events that board members are invited to take part in. You can go to parent teacher conferences, I guess, if you'd like. No school on Presidents' Day. A regular board meeting will be on the 18th. The New Mexico School Board Association Board Institute paperwork and and things have moved along today to get registration for everyone. So we'll be ready for that. I will push that out to to all the board members. Looking forward to that. As you may know, today at noon, the 60-day session started. And so we will be not exactly in the middle of that session, but we will be able to be, we will be in Santa Fe to participate in not only board training, but opportunities to speak to our legislators as needed. Madam President, members of the board, yesterday and as early as this morning, some legislative platforms were pushed out and voted on by different organizations. The Legislative Educational Study Committee, Mr. Joe Guillen and the School Boards Association put out an email with their platform and and some some documents about about budget. I will once again get those out to the board members. If you have any questions about any of the initiatives or the platforms or the bills that these associations are interested in getting passed or not passed, they'll be listed. And I would be more than welcome to have a conversation and talk about the importance of some of them and how we can move forward to support some of the bills. Last Friday, it came across my desk in an email through the Superintendents Association that there's a bill that it looks like it's going to be introduced to really help step up on the state side with the attendance issue that's plaguing all of the school districts and trying to change some of that information. Again, that came out late Friday, but it's not on anyone's platform that I saw right now. It was just kind of an FYI, FYI. So I will get that to the board members to to, you know, we can keep an eye on it. The website, the legislature that has is is pretty good. It's pretty good. Once you learn how to navigate it, see what committees bills have landed in, who's introducing bills and how to get hold of of the right people to either support or voice our concern about some of the bills that are coming up. And so there And so there'll be a lot of documents I'll send to you in the next few days with, with the, again, if I may, the School Boards Association, the, the Superintendents Association, the Legislative Educational Study Committee. Those are the three kind of organizations that we keep an eye on that help us track bills. And then lastly, what typically happens is through the New Mexico School Superintendents Association, they have a bill tracker. And so on a regular basis, if there's a bill that has anything to do with education, they will track it and send us updates and I can, I will push that out to the board as well. Okay? All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I think I had some notes in, no, that's it. All right, so Madam President, we come to closing. I recommend adjournment of tonight's regular school board meeting.
Superintendent Viviano has recommended that we have our closing adjournment to our January 21st school board meeting. Do I have a motion? A second?
Second.
All those that say, all those say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passed. Meeting is adjourned at 7:07.
Thank you.